Call to order the Monday, August 15th, 2016, Currituck County Board of Commissioners meeting. My first like to do is have the invocation and the pledge of allegiance led by Pastor Glenn McCraney, United States Navy Chaplain Retired. Mr. McCraney.
Let us pray. We pause for a few moments to give you thanks to the Lord for a nation conceived in liberty and dedicated to the principle that all people are endowed by you with certain rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Give to our country zeal for justice that we may use our liberty in accordance with your gracious will. Protect our country now as it is being assaulted by forces seen and unseen. Grant your divine wisdom upon our county commissioners as they meet tonight. Instill with them holy hearts with a holy purpose, with visions of service to the people of Currituck. May they feel the deep responsibilities of their elected offices. Enlighten their hearts and minds that they may behold the ever-dawning of a bright new future for our beloved Currituck County. As residents of this historical area, may we be a grateful people, seeking to serve rather than been only served. May we celebrate this day, the rich gifts of life, freedom, and liberty which has been bestowed upon us by the sacrifices of others. Guide us when we do not know the way, which way to turn. Let us live and cherish your holy mercies. For these things we pray in your holy name, and all God's people say, "Amen." I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is for the approval of the agenda. We have some changes tonight. Under administrative reports, we're going to remove Mobile Crisis Services Report, and the Wellhead Dredging Commissioner, O'Neil, had requested the report for Wellhead Dredging. He cannot make it tonight for personal reasons, so we're removing that so he can be present when we do that. Under board appointments, we're going to remove the ABC Board Appointments and Historic Preservation Commission. The reason we want to do that is to get all of the appointments that are stacking up to have them done at one time so we can be consistent and get through that. Under the consent agenda, we want to add the approval for alcohol for the event at the Soundside Park. The revised application was originally approved August 1st at that board meeting. And additionally, I'd like to add closed session to consult with the county attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to receive advice from the county attorney.
Some movements, Chairman.
Second motion.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, and opposition motion passes unanimously. All right. I'd like to start out, I see we have some young people here. It's always good to see young folks out here attending a meeting, to see how their government works, and welcome. All right, the first item we have under public hearings is Public Hearing in Action, PB 15-10, The Landing. This is request for a preliminary plant use permit for a 29-lot conservation subdivision located on Baxter Lane. It's Tax Map 14, Parcel 4, Moyoc Township. With that, this is a use permit. It's conducted in a quasi-judicial setting. All those that wish to speak about this matter in any capacity, please come forward for swearing. Do you swear that testimony you give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Consider yourself sworn. Thank you. So we'll open the hearing, and with that, Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request for a major subdivision, which is, you alluded to also, and Currituck County requires the issuance of a use permit. This particular property, as you can see on the aerial photograph, is 29, or excuse me, is a total of 120 acres in size. However, the total development area will be 72 acres. We're actually removing 47 of it as a residual parcel, but of the 72 acre that's in the development area, you'll have 29 lots and then providing 43 acres of open space. Lots are about 40,000 square feet in size or larger, so you end up having a density of about half a unit per acre, so pretty low-density subdivision, all things being relative. You can see on the land use plan, the area is designated as rural in our land use plan. Current zoning of the property is agricultural. They are developing this property under the agricultural zoning district. Moyoc Small Area Plan actually designates the upland portions of this property as limited service, and then the wetlands are the portions abutting, or moving towards, of Single Landing Creek as conservation. So what you can see on this lot is, or this particular tract of land, it's at the back of, or behind, to the rear of Baxter Lane Estates, which is a subdivision of, also of one-acre lots. To give some context, let's go back to the aerial photo, or at least, you can see Baxter Lane is kind of to the north and goes out to the highway. This is property that's located east of, kind of northeast of the Single Landing subdivision, east of Baxter Lane Estates. It's in the area where we've seen some other subdivision growth over the past few years. The county's property that's being considered for a park property is currently right here, if you can see my pointer on the screen. So a small portion of this property actually abuts the county's property in the Single Landing subdivision. Again, what you have is 29-lot subdivision. A couple of things I want to note about this is it does connect to Little Acorn Trail, which is now a NC DOT street, so access to the subdivision will come through Little Acorn Trail, which then goes out and connects to Baxter Lane. The property does include trails and a little bit of sidewalk infrastructure, so you'll have the ability, on this particular subdivision, to walk around many of the lots. It's relied really more on a trail system than sidewalks, which makes sense for the larger lot sizes. It also provides a water access. You can see here, at the kind of the top, the north end of where the development is, there's a landing that goes out to Single Landing Creek, and at that point, the neighborhood will have access either to walk out to the creek or even put a kayak in perhaps, so there is some community water access on this. One thing I want to also point out is the county's property is, again, abuts the southwest corner of this development. They've also proposed, or allowed, the county to obtain an easement, so if the county moves forward with the development of the 25 acres in Single Landing as a park, there would be an easement made available to the county, so folks in that park could actually walk and access potentially the Single Landing Creek. They're offering that as the parkland dedication. So there's a lot of interesting things about the subdivision in terms of walkability and connectivity. It's served by county water, by the public water system, the proposing on-site septic systems for wastewater. Again, it connects to Little Acorn Trail, which is currently in the Baxter Lane Estates subdivision. And as I mentioned, the Recreation and Park Area Dedication, as opposed to the pavement lieu, or even dedicating a piece of land, they have proposed to provide an easement that would provide some water access from the county's park, which staff, planning staff, as well as the Parks and Recreation Director thinks would be perhaps a good addition to our park system and our landholding there in Single Landing. The TRC has reviewed this request and does recommend approval of this subdivision. Again, it's fairly low-density, one-acre lots, it's in the agricultural zoning district. It connects to many of the other subdivisions we've seen approved in the past years, connects to the county park, potentially. In your agenda package, beginning on Package Page Eight, you can see the Use Permit Review Standards as part of your consideration tonight. In addition to the technical aspects of the subdivision, you also have to consider the use permit and the four review standards that are required to be made. There are preliminary applicant findings included in your agenda packet, as well as preliminary staff findings for your consideration. Since this is a use permit, it did not go to the planning board for recommendation, so tonight you have a staff recommendation for this, which is approval. And with that, I can answer any questions you have.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Woody, and I'm not sure if you'd be the right person, on Page 12, Number 14, it talks about the fact of a, let me try to read, camping platforms. Exactly what are we talking about when it says camping platforms?
So the easement that the developer has proffered to the county on Single Landing Creek would allow the construction at a future date of a camping platform? As most of the board is aware, the county's been working with Virginia Beach and the city of Chesapeake on the Green Sea Plan, which is a concept of kind of promoting ecotourism in the northern part of the mainland in conjunction with Virginia Beach and Chesapeake. And one of the strong driving parts of that plan is actually getting people out onto these waterways. The one thing that's been real popular among kayakers and canoeers is the idea of camping platforms, so you can actually canoe and then camp at a platform on the swamp, if that's what you want to do. And it's basically a freestanding platform that you could put a tent on, you could stay a night, and it would, if the county built that at this location, it would just contribute to a network of camping platforms between Currituck County, Virginia Beach, and Chesapeake.
Aren't they, they're currently doing that in the Roanoke River and inlands.
Correct. The Roanoke River has about more than 20 camping platforms.
Very popular.
They've been very successful with that. It's been a real tourism draw for that part of the state. So it's just looking to the future, Commissioner Hall, in the event if that ever takes off, it would be an opportunity the county could explore there.
Any other questions that the board would have at this time?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Woody, I'm reading Mr. Mims's comments for available fire flow, and I don't really understand what he's saying here. Can you help me?
Yeah, Mr. Mims, when he reviews subdivisions, he uses what's called the ISO method, and what that says is you have to obtain certain fire flows, and if you can't, then you have to increase setbacks and things. So he's basically just saying that once this goes the construction draw and it's modeled, he's going to apply the ISO fire flows, which may result in an additional side setback.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board at this time? If not, I'll ask the applicant to come forward then and present his case. Mr. Bissell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We should have available a color rendering of it. If we could wait just a minute for that to come up.
It's up.
Yeah. It's not up down here. And I wanted to show you that because I think it helps you to get a little better sense of what we're trying to do on this parcel, because it shows, you know, how we've got the 29 lots kind of nestled in between existing woodlands and wetlands, and it shows you how there are natural buffers that kind of isolate this from most of the surrounding community. It also shows there on the northeast corner, where you can see an area kind of in dark green where we're proposing that community water access. Anyway, the subdivision will be primarily accessed, as Mr. Woody said, through the Baxter Lane Estates, through an existing state road, which has recently been taken over by DOT for maintenance and ownership, so we are connecting to a state road. I wanted to also kind of show you the open space. We, you know, the UDO requires, for this type of development, 50% of open space, and we are actually providing 60%, so you require 50, and we're offering 60%. The, I also wanted to go over the findings in connection with the use permit application. First, the use will not endanger the public health or safety. We will adhere to county health and safety standards, including recommendations that have been made by the Alamo Regional Health Services. They have classified all of the lots as provisionally suitable, and the project should not adversely affect public health or safety. The use will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands, and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. The land to the west and to the south has been developed into single-family homes, and the developable portion of this tract will be developed in a manner that's similar to those two adjacent subdivisions, with an overall density that's actually a little bit lower than the adjacent tracks at 0.4 per acre. The use will therefore not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands and should be in harmony with the surrounding area. The land use will be in conformity with the Currituck County Land Use Plan and the Moyoc Small Area Plan. We have outlined in your packet several consistencies there, one of which is Policy HN1, that the county shall encourage development to occur at densities that are appropriate for the location, and Policy HN3, that the county shall encourage two forms of residential development, one of which is an open-space development, which this project is. Also, Policy ES2, the preservation of wetlands, and you can see on the rendering that we're preserving a large amount of native wetlands. The Moyoc Small Area Plan also identifies the site as limited service, which calls for low to moderate residential densities, defined in the Small Area Plan as 1 to 1.5 lots per acre. So what we're applying for is a very low density at only 0.4 units per acre. So the proposed use is certainly in keeping with the policies of this plan as well, some of which are to promote compatibility between new development and existing development, to encourage development that's consistent with the rural atmosphere, and I think we've already discussed that this project does accomplish those goals. The use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. Now, the county appears to have adequate facilities to service its development, including schools, fire and rescue, law enforcement, and so forth. As Mr. Woody mentioned, we are also providing pedestrian connectivity. It's promoted in the Small Area Plan to both the neighboring subdivision and to the adjacent county property. And we're offering the easement, which you can see running along the south property line in a kind of bold dashed brown line. We're showing where an elevated boardwalk might be constructed that would connect the county park to the Single Landing Creek. And then we're also providing a 30-foot easement along the creek where, for the construction of the camping platform that was mentioned. So we believe that all the criteria have been met for the issuance of a use permit, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Mr. Bissell, on that map up there, can you point out, or Ben, I'm sorry, where the water access is going to be again on that? That one right there?
You're talking about the community access?
Yeah, okay, that's, okay.
Yeah, that's the community access here, and you can see there's a sidewalk, or a trail, or boardwalk, whatever it ends up being that, basically.
So we're providing a kayak launch area there as well.
Based on the boardwalk you just talked about and the kayak launch, when will those be built compared to, how many houses would have to be done before you build it? Or would it be done first or last?
Well, my expectation would be that the kayak launch would be done up front along with the roadway construction. That's really both a marketing tool and something that shows, you know, a potential buyer that that amenity is going to be available.
And how about the boardwalk?
The boardwalk, we're actually offering an easement to the county, for the county to be able to construct the boardwalk along the south property line. It's not really a community amenity, it's really an amenity for Currituck County as a whole.
All right.
Mr. Woody, I thought you said the density was one acre, one per acre? Just under a half unit per acre. Okay. But the lot size is one acre, or actually, the lot size are 40,000 square feet and higher.
What versus that?
Minimum is 40,000.
Minimum's 40,000 in the ag. But if you take the density of the tract as a whole.
Got it. And. We've got 29 lots on 72.66 acres.
So you're taking the aggregate of the totality of the 79 acres, dividing the number of houses into it, but it could vary whether it's 40,000 or.
Yeah, the gross density is .4 units per acre, but then the minimum lot size is going to be between 40 and maybe 43 to 44, if you get up that high.
Now, is 79 acres we're talking about, is that including the wetlands?
Correct. So my, the reason for my question is, on the use permit application, it's 72.66 acres, and it says 25 acres in Phase 1. So typically, when I hear a Phase 1, that means there must be a Phase 2.
Actually, no, that's incorrect. There's a, that's a vestige from a previous application. We had applied last year for a first phase of this development of 10 lots.
Okay.
And that didn't move forward, and so we're now asking for the entire development of 29 lots.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? I've got a couple. The required the second finding relative to the value, the impact on surrounding developments or residences. I've heard what you proffered. What are your proposed values for the houses that are going in there, and where are they in relation to their surrounding houses in the neighborhoods, if you know?
I don't know that a value has been established on those. It's my understanding, though, that the type of construction and the size of the house would be similar to what's been developed in the adjacent subdivisions.
All right. And for Mr. Woody, the students that you have, I think it was like seven or two, is that consistent with what your progression has been with the county? Because you keep a run in total, so that we have an idea, the board has an idea going forward, what kind of timetable we're looking at for the, by building a new school?
Correct.
Is this consistent with what?
It is, and there's capacity available in the school system, so this doesn't put us into a situation of having a capacity issue.
All right. I have no further questions. Anyone on the board have any further questions for Mr. Bissell? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, if there's any represented opposition.
I'm going to sign up to speak.
Yes, good evening. Being a homeowner.
Excuse me, sir, if you would, could you state your name and address for the record?
Frank Samuel, 110 Arrowhead Lane, Baxter Lane Estates.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Being a homeowner, we do have concerns, and the gentleman I heard was just talking about safety. The safety concern is, there's only one entrance and one exit to get into this neighborhood, so if there was a fire, and for some reason, one of the roads, the road was blocked, they wouldn't be able to get in. And also, he was talking about an area for a kayak. Is that going to be open to the public, or is that just going to be open to the people in that neighborhood?
It would be a private amenity for the neighborhood.
Okay, so it's not a public access area then?
Not their kayak access, no.
Well, the park itself then?
The county owns property that's not part of this request.
But I understand it, but then you would have to go through our neighborhood and the new neighborhood, even get to that park. Is that correct?
This subdivision, if they were to drive, they would drive through Little Arrowhead, or Arrowhead, the Little Acorn, excuse me.
My neighborhood.
Yeah, but if they were to walk, they could walk directly to the county's park.
But more than likely, they'll probably drive, bring their family and whoever. Okay. And another concern is, Little Acorn going to be used for the construction road? In other words, are they going to be driving construction vehicles through our neighborhood to build this new neighborhood?
Most likely, yes.
Okay. And what about the water stations, as far as another water tower, pumping stations? We're going to be using, our pressure rate now is not that good, so you start adding 29 more homes, and we're going to lose water pressure. And then, as far as the schools, I saw where y'all came up with a total of 13 students total. How do y'all predict that? I mean, your future readers or?
We have, the county contracted with Tishler-Beis, which is a financial consulting company, and they actually created what's called student generation rates. So it's a model, I mean, it's not just out of thin air. They basically have been able to model what's typical number of students associated with a house in Currituck County.
And how many students before we start building new schools? How many more students do we need? I mean, the students now, they have to travel a long ways to go to high school.
There's, the county tracks capacity of schools, elementary, middle, and high schools, and there is capacity available for this subdivision.
Well, and then the drainage ditches, I think if y'all have made drainage ditches the way our neighborhood is, I feel sorry for the people in the new neighborhood. But that's our concern, really, our main one is the safety as far as one way in, one way out, which is very bad idea. And that's really what I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Woody, the gentleman had an interesting point that I'd like to take a little further. So the kayak is for the neighborhood itself? Correct. So, and that kayak area is the flat red one that's on the water, south of or below, I guess? It's the upper one. Okay, so that one? Yes. That would be some sort of boardwalk and a kayak launch for the residents. Okay, and so what is the lower one again? That's an easement, they, as part of their recreation. Understood. Or land dedication, they've offered an easement that the county could, at some future point, utilize for perhaps a boardwalk and some sort of access to the Single Landing Creek.
You can make like a canoe launch at that location, possibly, probably.
A what launch? I mean, because of the distance, probably more of like fishing access, or just a viewing platform, or you could interpretive-type boardwalk, like at the county's rural center. We have some boardwalks down there, they're for walking, so maybe.
Mr. Woody, wouldn't that all go along with, like you said, the freeway project that's ongoing, and depending where and where, what goes on with that?
It does, it fits into the Green Sea, then it fits into the county's policy of, you know, as the county government, we try to pursue access or ability to get to the water as much as possible, so.
All right, just for clarification, the drainage issue that was brought up, the drainage for this project is like, it's consistent with all the others, that it has to meet an engineered standing, so there's no more post-runoff than there is pre-development runoff, is that correct? And that would include the drainage ditches?
Correct, they're subject to the Currituck County Stormwater Ordinance.
And I never heard the question before, relative to the water impact, the water pressure impact, is that something the county looks at going forward?
Yeah, the county will require that the developer model the water system, like, because going back to the Fire Marshal's comments, we have to make sure there's adequate pressure for firefighting purposes, so.
Well, of course, that would be right then, because if you have the necessary pressure for the firefighting, you would then, would it be safe to assume that if you have necessary firefighting pressure, then it wouldn't have a deleterious effect on the pressure for regular household functions?
I would assume, I'm not an engineer, so I'm reluctant to wade into that, but that's certainly something that I believe is, or I know is modeled and accounted for in designing these water systems and these water connections to the county water supply.
Pressure is relevant for pumps and elevated tanks, that's what gives you pressure, and volume is relevant to pipe size, hydrant size, or main sizes.
Thank you, yeah. All right. I see that we had two people signed up for, well, actually, we only had Mr. Samuel come up and be sworn, so that'll close that portion. So any board, any further board questions relative to the matter that's before us? Yes, sir?
Can I speak, try to address a couple of the questions that were raised here?
Absolutely.
The first and primary concern seemed to be the access issue. And I want to point out that there actually is a secondary access to the property. The Arrowhead access will be the primary access because that's the state road, but the UDO also requires a connection to the existing Baxter Lane Extension, which you can see running to the northwest corner of the property there. That road is not improved to state standards, but there is going to be a connection there.
Is that the gray area that's right above the red line?
Up on the top corner.
Top left side.
Right there where the circle is.
That's Baxter Lane Extension. State maintenance ends on that road about, I think, 800 feet north of there. There's a hairpin turn, but that is an approved road, and there will be a connection there, so there will be an alternate means of egress.
Question for, to clarify that, is the improvement going forward, is that part of...
That part of the proposed subdivision is paved up to the red circle.
But the continuation to have the connectivity, Mr. Woody, what do we normally do relative to that?
We require connectivity, and it'll be built as a secondary connection to that property line. I'll note, there's been a lot of discussion in the past over whether that Baxter Lane Extended is public or private. Do you have access to it, do you not? And that was probably one of the big hangups last time this was discussed, is getting access. So Little Acorn Trail will be the primary access. I suspect if there were an emergency, certainly you'd probably take cars out the Baxter Lane Extension connection. I don't know that that should be the matter, of course, typically, because again, Baxter Lane Extended is not a DOT road.
And that wouldn't be used for any type of construction?
The construction equivalent would not use that.
Good on Baxter.
And I think they would use...
At least they wouldn't be intended to.
Little Acorn, because it's an NC DOT road.
Exactly.
All right, sir.
And then secondly, as far as the water, they have, the county has recently flowed the hydrant that's nearest this property, and I believe the result was 888 gallons a minute. When you take the residual to 20 pounds, which is what you would, how you would figure your fire flow. So that is sufficient for the type of development we're proposing. And we're also connecting to an existing water line to the North Airline, that same route we were just discussing now. The existing water line is not adequate for fire hydrants on that Baxter Lane Extension, but we are running a water line, an eight-inch water line up there and connecting it to that existing line, and there's an opportunity for a future enlargement of that line to complete the loop.
So am I hearing you saying that there, or you're saying, as the engineer for this project, it's not going to have a deleterious effect on the water pressure of surrounding?
That's my opinion, yes.
All right. Any other questions? All righty.
Thank you.
I have a question since that gentleman did mention something.
And you're sworn, you can come back and have a rebuttal if you'd like to, sir.
I heard bring up a while ago, when the first gentleman was speaking, about the value of the homes haven't been set yet. Will the value, minimum value of the homes be set before they start any construction to protect us homeowners that already own a home in Baxter Lane Estates?
Would you like to respond to that question, or would Mr. Woody?
The county is not in a position to require a minimum value and...
That's right. I mean, we can't tell them what kind of, we don't have the authority, I don't believe, as a county to mandate what kind of value the houses are. I was asking the question to try to further clarify the number two requirement that we must find, that it would not have a negative value on the value of the surrounding houses. The evidence that he provided was that they would be consistent in value with those surrounding neighborhoods, but they had not, I guess, have any elevations that have gone to record. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And that brings up an interesting question. Because was any evidence presented to this board that would substantiate that the values would not adversely impact that the neighborhood beside them? And while, you know, it'd be nice to take folks at what they've stated, we know that things happen after this board, that we have an obligation to ensure that the property values are in fact maintained. In absence of elevations of what the typical homes might look like in that neighborhood, I would almost suggest to you that we have failed to hear evidentiary material presented that would preserve the value of the neighborhood besides.
And because, now, to answer your question, to what I heard, it could be different or it could be less than what other commissioners heard, but relative to the value of the adjoining property, I heard that it was going to have lower density than the surrounding property, or at least that was information that was provided. And then a kind of generalized statement that they would be in harmony with the surrounding area, but that's a generalized statement. Your point is noted. I mean, does the applicant have any, I mean, maybe a starting figure these things might be?
Well, typical values in the area seem to be running in the $250,000 to $350,000 range. And the developer has indicated that he is expecting that a starting size of a home would be around 1,800 square feet. So I would think that you would see comparable values.
So if we put that as part of any motion to approve that neighborhood, that the house value would be at a minimum of $250,000 as part of the motion to approve this subdivision, your applicant would be okay with that?
I believe so.
And again, all we're trying to do is to preserve and create a record for the four requirements that are required by law that we have to have evidence on in order to make a decision going forward. So that's, we're not trying to be nitpicky, but we're just trying...
We're comfortable with that condition.
Okay. All righty. Any other questions? Hearing done, I want to close the public hearing and ask for board deliberation and their pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve PB 1510, the landing for the preliminary plat, including that the use will not endanger the public health or safety, that it adheres to the county health and safety standards, including the recommendations from the Albemarle Regional Services, that the, it will not injure the value of the adjoining or budding lands and will be in harmony with the area which is located, including the minimum price range of 250,000. The use will be conformity with the land use plan and other official adopted plans, including the staff findings in our package, numbers one through three. And the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities, including but not limited schools, fire, rescue, law enforcement, and other county facilities applicable to state. Standards and guidelines should be followed in determining when the public facilities are adequate. That's my motion, sir.
All right, we have a motion for the board. Do we have a second?
I'd second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, and opposition, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, sirs. All right, the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second that motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, and opposition, motion passes unanimously. The commissioners report, I want to kind of jump in front here, which is not normal, but I'd like to, and the reason I'm doing that, so if other commissioners want to comment on it, they may do so. This is due to the efforts of Cola Lynch, Tourism Promotion and Events Coordinator. Currituck Heritage Day Bulls and Barbecue Edition will have a Kansas City Barbecue Society Cook-Off and a rodeo. The cook-off is a sanctioned event of the Kansas City Barbecue Society and is now also an official state barbecue championship. The following proclamation was secured by Michelle Ellis, Michelle Ellis, Tourism Public Relations Coordinator. I'd like to read that for the record. The State of North Carolina, Pat McCory, Governor. Currituck Heritage Festival Bulls and Barbecue Throwdown 2016 by the Governor of the State of North Carolina, a proclamation. Whereas Currituck Heritage Festival Bulls and Barbecue Throwdown will be an annual event in Powell's Point, North Carolina. And whereas the Currituck County Department of Travel and Tourism is dedicated to the furthering the art of hardwood smoking through public education. And whereas the Currituck Heritage Festival Bulls and Barbecue Throwdown is a sanctioned event of the Kansas City Barbecue Society, and as such, will draw contestants from all over the state of North Carolina, as well as several other states each year to participate. And whereas the grand champion of the Currituck Heritage Festival Bulls and Barbecue Throwdown will receive invitation to the Jack Daniels World Championship Cook-Off. And whereas the State of North Carolina recognizes the Currituck Heritage Festival Bulls and Barbecue Throwdown as an official state barbecue championship in the state of North Carolina. Now, therefore, I, Pat McCory, Governor of the State of North Carolina, do hereby proclaim September 17th through 18th, 2016, as Currituck Heritage Festival Bulls and Barbecue Throwdown in North Carolina, and commend its observance to all citizens. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and affixed a great seal of the State of North Carolina at the Capitol in Raleigh this fourth day of August in the year of our Lord, 2016, and of the Independence of the United States of America, the 241st. Signed, Pat McCory. Commendations to travel and tourism. Here, here.
Yes.
Now, I will begin with Commissioner Comment, Commissioner Payment.
I have nothing at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Gilbert.
Just that JP Knapp is in session now, so just be mindful of the traffic, the increased traffic with the schools and the school buses. Be mindful, even though we have, you know, our summer traffic's still going on, these bus drivers are having a time getting in and out of the developments, so please just be mindful to watch out for our students and our bus drivers.
Thank you. Commissioner Boma.
I'd like to bring to the attention of not only this board, but the community as a whole. You know, we rely on advisory boards to help us with guiding the county in the direction and the growth that the county is moving. And as such, those boards operate under a umbrella that is basically supervised, officiated, and basically overseen by this Board of Commissioners, which is why we so frequently spend time in ensuring that the right people are on boards. With that volunteer position, also comes a certain element of responsibility, and notably to behave as ambassadors of the county in the actions that they take. It's a very fine line between your First Amendment rights to do and say anything you want to do or say, but when you start operating under the umbrella of the county, you fall under a different set of standards. And so behavior that is undergone typically in some of the social media that's out there, you know, we try to teach kids in high school that there are consequences for your actions. We try to teach kids that the reality is once something's electronic, it's forever. And it has come to my attention that we've had a couple of actions that have gone on here real recently that reflect poorly on the decisions, the personal decisions made by individuals on our boards. And it's disturbing, but it's also a warning. You know, you serve on our boards as a volunteer, and from the bottom of my heart, I thank every single individual that serves on those boards. But the flip side is, you have a role and you have a responsibility to act in a mature manner and as well as in the appropriate manner. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Hall.
Nothing at this time.
Commissioner Halden.
Couple of things. I'd just like to thank staff, I'd like to thank Mr. Weatherly and Will for their work and timely work on coming to Knott's Island and taking a look at the drainage and parking issues over there at the boat ramp parking facility. Like to thank the state as well. They were very timely in coming over and replacing some culverts and doing some ditch work. And Mr. Weatherly just let you know everybody that water's gone and the grass has been cut, and I thank y'all for that. And the other thing, Dan, I just wanted to ask you, the mile markers over on the beach in the off-road area, who put those up and who's responsible for those?
If I'm not mistaken, I believe the county purchased them, and we might work with the volunteer fire department might have put them on the beach, either them or the sheriff's department, but the county purchased them and we have one of those two agencies puts them up for us.
There's a bunch of them missing, I have noticed. If you would get someone to check that.
Yes, sir.
And last but not least, my wife and I have been spending a whole lot of time on the beach this summer, and on three separate occasions, I've seen tour operators doing a wonderful job of letting people know about the distances from the horses. Just last evening, we were riding out and there was some horses up on a dune, and there was a whole carload of people who stopped, and there was one lady as closest from here to the chairman to that horse. I stopped and blew my horn. A tour come up beside me and seen it, turned around, and went right up to the dunes and told them what the ordinance was. That's the kind of activity we need, and that's good, I'm glad to see that. And I commend them for doing that. I've seen it about three different times this summer, I've seen that. So, good job to them for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Only thing I'd like to add, night, the summer is winding down, and how do we know that? Well, one, the traffic wasn't as bad this weekend down in Lower Currituck, but two, ritualistically, there's probably many of our citizens out there that engage with me. I know we have maybe some on this board who saw our children off to college, to university, to that continuing part of their life. And, believe me, I commiserate with you, but it's all good. So for those who had to lug up three or four flights of stairs or whatever, all the accoutrements for student living at our North Carolina universities, I feel your pain. But let's wish them luck going forward, and as the summer ends, let's keep them in our thoughts and prayers. Now, I have nothing further with that. County manager's report.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, public comment. I have nobody signed up for tonight. Is there anyone here that wishes to make a public comment? If not, the next thing on our item is closed session, and I will move that the board entering the closed session pursuant to GS 143-318-11 sub-A, sub-three, to consult with the county attorney in order to preserve attorney-client privilege and receive advice from the county attorney. And for the following pending lawsuits, Swan Beach Corolla v. Currituck County. With that, I'll recess this meeting. With a second.
So moved.
And...
Our second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.